I will call the board meeting of the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors to order. Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Leyland?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
White?
Here.
Delka?
Here.
We will now have a moment of silence to reflect on our actions. And let's remember the family of Judge Harris. Please join me for a moment for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll entertain a motion to receive the agenda as proposed or amended.
It's all moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. We have an agenda. Public comments. Do we have anybody in the boardroom that would like to provide public comment? Do we have anybody on Zoom or on the phone that would like to provide public comment? Claims and payments, Mr. Perry.
This week's expenditures total $1,013,820.64. The larger items out of our 302 Rhodes Bridge Capital Fund, $92,335. Secondary roads, $752,618. A lot of that was the Grundy Road grading. The Health Department, $30,005.76. And finally Sheriff's Department, $35,457. Everything looks normal.
Any questions?
Move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Veder, roll call vote.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
Project updates from department heads and/or elected officials. Kathy?
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, county engineer. The road projects are going well. Same for the bridge projects. I did want to bring your attention to a couple of items that we are working on in my department. One of them is to update the vacation ordinance, and we've been working with the city of Waterloo, and I might try and add on this issue. We've been getting quite a few requests in the past few years for residents out in the county to vacate portions of roads. There's a distinction between some of our roads have been, were created over 100 years ago, and a public right-of-way was established when they were created. We also have plaits that have been accepted by the Planning and Zoning Board, and some of those roads were never developed, but they were still platted. So there's a real distinction there. We, I would like to get your, in order for us to update the ordinance, which I would like to see us do so it's more clear between those two types of roads. Would you like to pursue a discussion in a work session? Or would you like to send me, send, would you like me to send you information through an email? Or how would you like to go about getting that information so that we can discuss it?
I'd prefer a work session.
I'd prefer email.
Well, I guess we could do both. You could send the email and then do a work session for those of us that want to attend, because I want an opportunity, I guess, to ask questions and not do it back and forth in an email.
Sure.
Doesn't matter to me. I would attend a work session.
I thought maybe if we had a work session, Eric Schroeder from the city of Waterloo, because they are tasked with looking at the roads that were platted, they would, they would have him put into the process.
It sounds like a pretty simple work session.
All right. Do you want to comment, Mike, or?
My understanding is that the item that's in dispute here is over who has input and gets to comment on, and I don't know that this is going to change that much at the same time over whether a road is vacated. My understanding is that this has come up repeatedly with at least one road. There are others that are just kind of roads to nowhere that are maintained for no reason that should be relatively non-controversial, I would think. And so, bottom line is, it's kind of cleaning up a couple of things that are not totally clear in the ordinance, which I believe, Kathy, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe Eric played a role in creation of that ordinance as well.
Absolutely, yeah.
And so, we met with him, and he's, and he's on board with cleaning up a couple of things, just making it clear who gets input and whose role is what in the process so that it might be able to streamline the process, not to, not to take anybody's input away, but might be able to streamline the process.
So if you did that, it'd take care of most of the problems anyway, right?
Well, the idea is, it would, it would, it would make it easier to address the problem.
That's, that's what I mean.
But yeah, but it wouldn't, but it wouldn't, you'd still have to go through the process.
Yeah, right, okay.
So I can plan a work session in the next couple of weeks, then?
Sure.
Okay, I'll proceed that way. And then the other issue I wanted to briefly discuss is that several of you have accompanied me out to bridge projects, some of our projects this summer. I thought it might be beneficial possibly to have, if you would all like to go on a tour. We did this a number of years ago. Would, would there be interest in going together as a group in a, in a van, perhaps? I've talked to Conservation Board. They have a van that we can have available. They would have available for us. We could go to the current Grundy Road project, the large Cedar River Bridge Crossing project.
Yeah.
Are you, would you be interested in something like that? I can?
So in lieu of that, because you're going to show me your bridge project today?
Sure, you would express some interest today, and?
Okay. Tom?
Yeah, no, I think that's a great idea. We did it. It's been quite a few years. The only thing is, you've got to make sure there's enough room for everybody, because we have to call a regular meeting in order, minutes and everything.
Yeah, and there's, there's some question as to, as to how we give the notice. And I think that probably the way around that is to simply indicate in the notice where the stops are going to be, and, you know, what the start time is. And after that, everything's approximate.
I recall the last time we had a city bus, and we did have a few public persons that were on the bus also, along with the board, the engineer and her staff. So we did have public on the bus last time also.
Yeah, and media came. Tim Jamison also was along, great.
Yep, so it's got to be a large enough vehicle to, and if I recall, it was a Met bus, if I'm not mistaken. And we went all, all over the whole county, if I recall.
Yeah, I have a call into David Sturch over at Met Transit, so I'll follow up with him. That sounds like that's probably the better vehicle.
Yes.
Okay, I'll keep you posted on that outing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kim?
Yeah, Kim Veder, IT Director. I just wanted to announce that the county mapping website is now beaconed, and so you get it to the same way that you were able to get to the old website. If you did have the old site bookmarked, I do have a link there so that it will get you to the right place. So just want to make the public aware of that.
Thank you.
No one will notice any change, really, from the outside, from the people utilizing it?
No, no.
The same.
It'll work, yeah.
Thank you.
Rory?
Good morning, Board. Rory Giving, Maintenance Superintendent. I just wanted to take a quick opportunity to address, I guess, my staff and the in-house services that they provided, especially yesterday. We, we took our chiller down yesterday over at the Pine Crest facility, and we, we did a, they call it a tube cleaning, which is a pretty extensive project. And I just wanted to acknowledge once again the in-house services that, that they provide. This particular project, if we were to outsource it, would have been probably on the other end of about $4,000. So they were able to come together yesterday morning and get this tackled for us very successfully. So again, I just want to acknowledge my staff and thank them for their service, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any others in the boardroom? On Zoom, do we have any department heads on Zoom? Yolando?
So good morning, Board. It's Yolando, Blackhawk County Veterans Affairs Director. I just wanted to take an opportunity out to let you know that you had two departments working together with the Warrior Expedition. I just want to give you a little quick update. You have five combat veterans who are riding a bicycle along the Great American Trail. They're driving, they're biking over 3,700 miles from Washington DC to Washington State. We currently had two veterans come in on Friday and Saturday. And, but I want to really take my hat off. I don't think KWWO articulated it well enough that Mike Henderson and Sheri Norstrom over at Conservation, they were actually the leads for this, in this standpoint, and they asked me to tag along. And so I really want to give credit where credit's due, because Sheri and Mike has, has taken the lead, and so has the Park Ranger out at McFarlane Park in La Porte City. So we, as a tandem with La Porte City and the success there, with Rick Calhoun, really opening up his farm and taking in the first two riders. And we have a second set of riders coming in sometime today. Again, extending this Iowa pride, Iowa love for veterans. We've got gift bags and things of that nature to support them. It's, it's an honor for them to come across, but to also to spend one night here in La Porte City, as La Porte City is like the start of that trail for Blackhawk County, as Mike would tell you. But they, those two guys are the, the two that I really want to thank for leading the success and getting the first two riders on their way. I don't, we're checking in to see where they're at now. I know they were going to go down south towards Hudson and, and then start heading towards Omaha, Nebraska, which is another nice state for those guys. Something unique, they're doing this as a, a way of emotional healing, in a standpoint. And some of it is dealing with trauma, and so it's a good way of doing it. But I really did want to take the opportunity to thank La Porte, American Legion in La Porte for opening their doors and supporting these veterans. And in fact, Sheri at Conservation is the one who purchased their dinner that night on Friday. And she purchased them in Iowa Tenderloin from Tootsie's. So again, we're showing them some Iowa pride in that standpoint. So I just wanted to make sure that those guys got their just due in that standpoint. Also, this weekend, I had an opportunity to speak and interact with some crew members of the USS Iowa, and that's the pre-com unit SSN 797. Their, their crews are coming in throughout the month of, of this month. And in July, they're coming in for RagBri, and then they'll be here for Iris Fest. But it's to let our public know that, you know, USS Iowa, you know, the very first one, of course, was a couple of surface ships, but this one is a subsurface ship. Something very unique as we look at the defense of our country. What better way to have our state represented by a submarine, especially with the defense of China and Russia, and, and when we talk about underwater warfare in that standpoint. So it's something to appreciate, something for us to admire, that the Navy selected a submarine to have our name state, our state's namesake. So we're proud of it, and we're just trying to show, again, Iowa love as they come through our city to learn about the Southern Brothers, about the history of Iowa, and about Waterloo itself and Blackhawk County. So I just want to share those two. We'll be meeting with them again in RagBri, and again during the Iris Fest, in that standpoint. Stand by to address any questions or concerns.
Any questions for Yolando? Thank you. Any others? I know Dr. N'boonie was, she's tied up with training this morning. She sent us an email, but are there any other department heads that would like to provide an update? All right, we'll move on to approval of the meeting minutes from June 22nd, 2021. Second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. Item number six, the consent agenda.
Second.
Mr. Veder, any questions, comments about the consent agenda? Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
An update from Ben DeLaGardel, DeLaGardel. Doing Business says Urban Services Incorporated in regard to Washborne Sanitary Sewer. I do not see Ben online, but is there anybody representing Ben or willing to provide this update? All right, I will contact Ben and make arrangements for him to give us an update in the future. Item 8A, a resolution that Community Services Agreement with a 2% increase between Blackhawk County and Eastside Mysterio Alliance, Jesse Cosby Neighborhood Center, and Operation Threshold to establish requirements that each agency shall comply with to be entitled to allocate designated funds to eligible Blackhawk County residents applying for shelter and energy assistance, effective July 1st, 2021, to be approved and direct the chair to sign for same. It sounds like Mr. Little has moved, moved to approve.
Second.
And we have a second. Colleen?
Yeah, I just wanted to take a second to really thank Mike for going over the agreements. It was just nice to have some extra eyes laid on them, just to make sure everything was good to go on those. So I really appreciate him taking the time to do that. And EMA, Jesse Cosby, and Operation Threshold still continue just to hug along and do a great job for everything that they're doing to distribute the funds for the shelter and utility assistance. And I always appreciate the Board of Supervisors' continued support for the general assistance program. It's just much needed. It's just been a really different year and a half as far as all the COVID funding. The agencies just do a really good job with all the referring that needs to happen with that. And if you have any other questions regarding the email I sent out, I'd be glad to answer those.
Any questions for Colleen?
Thank you, Colleen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mike?
I just, I just comment, first of all, thank you, Colleen, for your kind words, and she helped me more than I helped her. But in any event, this should bring funding of these agencies into compliance with the revelation that we recently had through the state auditor's office.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
Item 8B is a resolution that the lowest reasonable bid received from Murphy Tractor Equipment, Waterloo, Iowa, bid opening June 22nd, 2021, at 9:05 AM for the purchase of one John Deere 772 GP AWD motor grader for the Blackhawk County Secondary Roads Department with a bid of $336,000. Be approved as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, county engineer.
Move to approve.
Second.
Kathy?
Yes, this is budgeted in our FY '22 budget for $365,000. As you recall, we did really receive just the one bid last week. Eltorfer did not bid, just, they could not meet our deadline, is what the bid actually said. This is, this meets our specifications. I would recommend that you accept this bid. They are telling us, Murphy is telling us about 120-day build time or lead time before we can actually take possession of it, so we would like to get ahead of. We don't pay for it until we receive it, so we won't be paying for it until September, probably. So I would recommend approval.
Kathy, you mentioned there was a $36,000, I think, for a trade-in.
Yes.
Is that in addition to the 336?
No, I'm sorry, this would be, it was 372 was the bid, and then $36,000 they're giving us for our 2012 Volvo, one of the Volvos, bringing the bid to 336,000. Thank you.
I would just note that this John Deere motor grader includes components made by the hard-working women and men at John Deere, right here in Blackhawk County. Thus, going to support good jobs here.
It's not Blackhawk County. It's not built in Blackhawk County.
Parts of the engine are, that's what the UAW tells me. But it supports, supports good jobs and the economic vitality of this community.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
White?
No.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
Item 8C is a resolution that the 2021-2022 property casualty risk management renewal from PDCM Insurance for coverage through the Iowa Community Assurance Pool, ICAP, in the amount of $445,426.84, a 14% increase. Be approved and direct the chair to sign.
Some vote.
Who sits on that board?
Second.
I'm sorry.
Who sits on that board?
Myself, Kayla, Linda, Grant, Tom, Amanda, Rory.
Kathy.
And Kathy.
Okay.
And Mike. Sorry, I don't mean to exclude Mike, but.
Who moved and seconded?
Tom and Linda.
Tom and I.
Linda. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so on June 16th, the insurance committee met. We met with PDCM. They discussed with us that a lot of the, a lot of the weather and the derecho storms affected the ICAP rates. A lot of municipalities are seeing an increase in their insurance rates. Ourselves, we're seeing a 9%. However, typically, ICAP sends us a voucher for our premiums that we, that we don't use. They're unable to do that for this coming year. So with that tacked on to the 9%, we're going to be seeing about a 14% increase. Unfortunately, it's, it's how it is and how it's, how it's been kind of throughout the year, so.
And, and there wasn't the 14% amount to how much? I was going to say, I think.
Uh, $33,962.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, any other comments or questions? Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
Item 9A, discussion possible board action, the possible sale of a strip of county-owned property. Kathy?
Yeah, good morning. We recently received a request from Mr. Jim Holmes, and he is here today, to, he would like to purchase a small piece of land off of, adjacent to our shop in the Hudson area. This photo shows, shows the shop, an aerial photo of the shop, of course. It's located at 665 Dale Drive in Hudson, Iowa. It's in that, if you're familiar with Hudson, it's in the, kind of the northwest portion of the city, in the industrial park, so to speak. And Mr. Holmes is interested in obtaining two or three feet of land on that, the southwest side of our property. You can see in the photo, there's a, those are plows that are sitting in an enclosure that was used for salt at one time. Since I've been here, I don't think we've used it for that, or at least it's been many years since we've used it. So we do have quite a bit of access on that property. And why don't you go to the next slide, Kim? So I would invite Mr. Holmes, if you want to speak about what this slide is doing.
We'd like to buy a pie-shaped piece off of the property. We would move our street property line over three feet, not the back, and that still gives you 38 inches about between our lot line and the sand bunker. We're trying to put, we're going to put an addition on there for office. We thought about putting it in the building, but it was going to take up about 12% of our building. So we'd like to put it on the outside.
So the building you have is a commercial building?
Yes, it was originally cold storage. Now we've insulated, electrified it, and.
For the record, you probably should give your name and address and your business. I was going to say, I'm not sure we got all that information.
Pardon?
If you could give your name, address, and the business so that we'd have that on record, it'd be great.
I'm Jim Holmes. I'm the owner, from Hudson, from Holmes Welding and Fabrication. My dad bought the business in '57. Right now, we have third generation working there, so.
What's the address of the business?
This is at. You're at 665, so I'm at, we're at 615.
I never call my own cell phone numbers.
Yeah. Have to send myself texts and emails all the time.
Kathy, does this inhibit your operations at all?
So in speaking with, I did talk to our, our maintenance supervisors, superintendent, and they talked to the guys who have been in the shop for many years. We have some regulars who have been out there for many years. They didn't, they did indicate as well that we haven't used that, that enclosure for a long time, that this small amount of property would not impede our operation in, in any way, so I don't have any opposition to this.
How do we determine the value of this piece of property?
So we could have it appraised, where we would, we would call an appraiser. That would be one way. Ryan, or, you know, Ryan does most of our appraisals in, for purchasing property that we need for roadway purposes. We don't have any special or any experience really in commercial properties or this types of properties, so we would probably not want to do that ourselves. We would probably ask an appraiser to do it.
I think we should entertain entering negotiations with Mr. Holmes.
Is that something we could just ask Mr. Holmes how he'd like to proceed with it and see what his thoughts are, if he'd be willing to?
Well, we'd be willing to work with you any way we can. It'd be about, let's see, 93,270, about 145, 135 square feet is about what it boils down to.
The property would equate 135 square feet, or the building?
Well.
The additional?
The piece of property we want to purchase.
Okay. That's quite small.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not worth higher than that.
Yeah.
Appraiser, that'd be more than what we, you.
Whatever you feel is right is, I mean.
Are we, Kathy, are we, maybe a question for legal? Anytime the county sells property, is there any procedure we got to go through? You know, it's a very small strip, but it doesn't make any difference if it's small or 100 acres. I'm assuming there's got to be some kind of a process we have to go through. And I don't know what that is. I don't have a problem with this. Kathy, just remember, once it's gone, you never have it back, so. Though you have never used it in a long time, you may need it someday. But again, I don't have any problem if you guys don't. But I just want to make sure this is taxpayers' land. It's not the Board of Supervisors. And if there's a procedure we need to follow, posting it, publishing it, or whatever, we probably should do it. I don't think the size has anything to do with anything.
Mr. Little, this is Mike trying to say, I don't think there's a special procedure we have to go through other than making sure it's decided at an open public meeting. First step that we'd, we'd want to do here is making sure that we had a good legal description of it. Then coming up with kind of a, whether it be through negotiation or whether, you know, coming up with some type of an agreement as to a price that could be presented to the board for discussion. At that point, if anyone wanted to, you know, anybody in the county wanted to object, the board's agenda would be their notice to do that. Or if they wanted to try, I mean, I don't foresee somebody wanting to buy a sliver of a pie-sized piece of property for more money, but that would be their chance. And perhaps one area, you know, since I believe it was Mr. White made the point that it wouldn't be worth getting an appraisal, and I think that makes sense, that it, that it would be rather costly to get an appraisal for something like this. I, I think I'd look at the per square foot, or at least start with the per square foot assessed value of, of area properties, including the welding shop's property. So that would be, that would be somewhere where you could start going. But I don't see any notice, or know of any notice requirements outside of the fact that it's got to be decided at a public meeting with standard meeting notice requirements met.
Would it be appropriate to make a motion to direct Kathy to enter negotiations, identify the legal description, enter negotiations, and bring back to the board a suggested price? I think that makes sense, yes.
I'll make that motion.
Grant, did you have a question or comment?
Could we also include in there that the county will not incur any cost in this transaction?
Sure. I'm sure we can include it, yeah. What was your point?
I believe there's a, a policy on disposition of county property, and I'm not positive as to the provisions of the policy, but it would probably be best to review that.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you.
And I'll, I'll take a look through the policies just to double check, to make sure everything's been met in that regard. But I do recall that we've. But I do recall that we've, we've done some of this with regard to, I realize it wasn't to a commercial entity, but it was to City of Waterloo, I believe this past year, relating to a lift station, so there's, there's been a fair amount of precedent as far as disposing of it. The important thing is that we, that we get the appropriate compensation for something like this. So yeah, I'll take a look at that and, and talk to you afterwards, Grant, about those policies.
And we'll bring it back to the next meeting.
Should we delay this for a week, then, until you review that policy, to make sure we know what we're doing?
Absolutely, that's what we'll do. All right, thank you. Item number 9B, discussion in regard to county preparedness and possible, possible updates for COVID-19. We were given a significant amount of data through email by NAFISA, but does anybody else have anything additional? Any reports or information from the board?
Just like to send out our condolences to the family of Robert, Flying Man. He was a member of Post 31 in Evansville, wonderful man, passed away the day before yesterday. We're celebrating his celebration of life, the 24th of next month, I think, and it's...
And again, to the family of Judge Harris.
Yes.
And that was a traumatic situation also for personnel associated with the courthouse. So, let's keep him and all those involved in our thoughts. Any other reports or information from the board? All right, we now have a closed session. While we're still in open session, I'll make a motion to proceed into closed session for the evaluation of professional competency of an employee whose performance is being considered when necessary to prevent needless and irreparable injury to that individual's reputation, and that individual has requested a closed session pursuant to Iowa Code 21.5, Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Vider, roll call vote, please.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Felka?
Yes.